Blackberries, anything that makes noise. We have one exception, that's Mr. Greenspan, who's on baby watch. So, we let him keep his cellphone on. But everybody else has to turn them off, or you will be asked politely to exit the premises. All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Second on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, no, it's first call. Okay. All right. I thought it was going to be. All right, as is our tradition, we take a moment of silence. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, Madam President, calling the roll, Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Brady.
Present.
Mr. Germana.
Present.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. Before we move on to item five, there is a motion to amend the agenda. Mr. Gallagher.
Madam President, I would move to amend the agenda this evening in regards to ordinance 2002-11-0016, which is presently under consideration of an ordinance for first reading adoption under suspension of rules, and placing that under consideration of an ordinance for first reading and referral to committee.
Your second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Ms. Simon, to amend the agenda. Do we need a roll call vote on that? All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Greenspan.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Schron.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, the agenda is so amended. Item five is public comment related to the agenda. Has anyone signed in? Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? Right. Item six is the approval of the minutes of February the 22nd. Those minutes have been circulated among the members, giving them an opportunity to read those minutes. There is no additions or corrections to those minutes. Is there a motion to approve them?
Don't move. Second.
Moved by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion on the minutes? All right, call the roll, please.
Approving the minutes. Mr. Greenspan.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Schron.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
All right, the motions are, motion carries and the minutes are approved. Number seven, a message from our county executive, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I actually do not have any contracts to comment on, so I'm going to decline. Thank you.
Okay. All right, item number eight, Mr. Rogers.
Madam Chair, I move that Rule 9D requiring the resolutions and ordinances that be read at three separate regular council meetings, and that Rule 13A requiring reference to committee be dispensed with, and that Resolution Number 2011-0072 be placed on final passage at today's meeting.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Rogers and seconded by Mr. Miller. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Resolution Number 2011-0072.
No, no, we got a motion to suspend the rules first.
Oh, I apologize for that.
That is the first time I caught you.
All right, suspending the rules. Mr. Greenspan.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Schron.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Never ever make some.
They do.
All right, you may proceed to read our Resolution 0072.
A resolution opposing the State of Ohio's plan to recapture and reallocate American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009 Home Weatherization Assistance Program funds from the County of Cuyahoga and other similarly situated sub-grantees, requesting the State of Ohio to reconsider and reverse its action, and urging all state senators, state representatives, congressional representatives, and U.S. senators representing Cuyahoga County to oppose this action and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Second.
All right, a move by Mr. Rogers and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion? Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Madam President. A few weeks ago, I was contacted by the Chair of the Policy Advisory Committee of the Home Weatherization Assistance Program, and informed that based on a memo from the Ohio Department of Development that was passed out at a meeting in early February, that Cuyahoga County stood to lose over $5 million in federal home weatherization assistance program funds. Now, for the benefit of the public, the Ohio Home Weatherization Assistance Program is a energy assistance program designed to increase the energy efficiency of dwellings owned or occupied by income-eligible Ohioans. It reduces participants' household energy expenditures and improve participants' health and safety. The Home Weatherization Assistance Program is federally funded by the U.S. Department of Energy and provided to Ohioans at no cost for customers whose annual household income is at or below 200% of the federal poverty guidelines. It's administered through the Ohio Department of Development. So, as early as November 24, 2010, the Department of Development issued a letter to Cuyahoga County that reiterated their commitment that Cuyahoga County would have until March 31, 2012, to expend their home weatherization assistance program funds. Subsequently, in a meeting in early February, there was a memo distributed by the Department of Development indicating that they would be moving up that deadline a full year to March 2011, that the county would have to expend all of their funds. So, based on that new deadline, and what we had working down the pipeline, and projects that we have currently underway, we stood to have to return over $5,557,743. This would impact nearly 800 families within the county. And these are also dollars that have already been assigned to specific projects, and some of these projects are being done with funding that's in addition to, or funding outside of what was provided by the federal government. So, in an effort to encourage the state and urge the state not to move forward with this proposal to reallocate this funding for Cuyahoga County, this resolution seeks to urge them not to do that. And I hope to have the support of my colleagues on this issue.
All right, any other discussion?
I'd like to say one other thing. This, and you can see on here, that this is also co-sponsored by the, or co-sponsored by the county executive.
I'm sorry?
I was just saying that the county executive is also signed on as a sponsor to this.
Mr. Miller.
Madam Chair, what the state is trying to do constitutes changing the rules in the middle of the game, and I think it's basically unfair to Cuyahoga County in that there's people in our community that need this assistance, and this assistance is already locally in the works. And so, I strongly commend my colleague and the executive Fitzgerald for bringing this forward, and it's something we really need to support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schron.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Rogers, you and I had a chance to talk about this. Was there any opportunities to accelerate the ability to use these funds, or to do any way to make commitments for future expansion of those funds that you looked, that we talked about?
Yeah, you know, I'm not sure. We'd have to double-check with the department working on this, but, you know, I did bring that up, and I wasn't given a sufficient answer on how quickly we could move forward on that.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Approving the resolution. Mr. Greenspan.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Schron.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Simon. Motion carries unanimously.
Right, thank you. Item number nine, Mr. Miller.
Madam Chair, I move that the Rule Number 9D requiring that ordinances and resolutions be read on three separate regular council meeting days, and Rule Number 13A requiring reference to committee, be dispensed with, and that Resolutions Number 2011-0073 and 2011-0074 be placed on final passage at today's meeting.
Second.
Miller seconded by Mr. Schron. Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Can you call the roll?
Suspending the rules, Mr. Greenspan.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Mr. Schron.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, now that the rules are suspended, you want to go on and read 0073.
Resolution Number 2011-0073, a resolution authorizing the county executive or his designee to enter into a temporary construction license agreement among Gateway Park LLC and Ferris Realty Limited and Ohio Limited Partnership and City of Brooklyn for the purpose of modifying the Memphis Industrial Parkway for the period February 28, 2011, through December 31, 2011, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Germana.
I'd like to move for passage of Resolution R211-0073.
A move by Mr. Germana, is her second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Simon. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Germana.
This resolution and the next one that follows, both are related, and this has to do with some improvements at the Memphis Industrial Parkway. Then we have the Cuyahoga County Department of Developmental Disabilities, that is one of the three major occupants of this roadway. It's about 500 feet long, and it's been a gravel road previously. We've got school buses and all kinds of traffic that goes on this. The City of Brooklyn would like to, you know, have this developed, and they will take ownership of the road once we have the improvement. So what we have before us today, because Cuyahoga County owns very small parcels on this 500 feet, we need to get the okay to have a license agreement because of our 90-day continuation of government agreement, things like this needed to be approved. And of course, then the next one has to do with getting an easement for the wires going over the small parcels that Cuyahoga County actually owns. And this has been in the works for quite some time, and they're obviously anxious to get this done in this construction period, so that's why we're asking for approval under suspension.
All right, any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Greenspan.
I just have a question. This is to modify. What's being modified?
Ms. T. Y. Actually, this project is actually constructing a road, which will eventually become a public road. Right now, it's an easement, just like Mr. Germana said, that it's of gravel. The resolution that you have is for a temporary easement for construction, so that's to actually construct the roadway portion of it. And the following one is just for an easement for the utility lines.
Okay. It just says modify. I didn't know what the original document was that we're modifying, I guess is my question. It says for the purpose of modifying. I just want to know what's being modified.
The parkway.
The part of the parkway.
So it's the parkway itself? This isn't changing an existing resolution?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we're going from gravel.
All right, any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Approving the resolution. Mr. Greenspan.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Schron.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. This becomes, just out of curiosity, then this becomes a public road, because it's not a public road now, right? The vote to make it a public road?
Yes, if I may. This is Fran Magliano from Brooklyn, and she can answer some of those questions.
Thank you. Thank you for looking at this resolution today. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Chuck, very much. This has been a pathway, and to answer your question about modification, the particular piece of property we're talking about has been owned and operated with a permanent easement by two private industry people. Gateway actually owns the parcel that we're talking about. Ferris Incorporated has a permanent easement to drive trucks across this. The county agency has been using this parcel, this pathway, for their Cuyahoga County Disability Development Center, which they built probably 20 years ago. So this road has been constantly used, and we are taking a gravel pathway, which has not been publicly dedicated, and putting it as a publicly dedicated road with 11 inches of concrete to actually support Ferris Incorporated, who hauls tonnage of steel up and down, and it's about 500 linear feet. This project has been on the books in Brooklyn probably for about 12 years. Some people actually have historically said it's been about 20. But right at the moment, we tried this once before, in 2004, for various reasons, the project fell apart. This year, this, this council is the perfect public-private partnership. You won't find another partnership at this statute. You've got private industry supporting this with funds. You've got the Department of Development from the State of Ohio supporting this with funds. You've got Cuyahoga County Board of Disabilities supporting this with funds. You've got your Economic Development Department supporting this with funds. You've got the County Engineers Office coming out to do in-kind services. There isn't one person that we haven't talked to about this project. And not only that, once this project is built, there are at minimum seven acres of available development space for new projects to be built on, thanks to Gateway, who is going to market this. But without this road, the front door of Brooklyn coming off of 71 looks lousy, absolutely. So, I mean, I am passionate, as you can tell, about this project. So to modify a pathway is what we're asking to do, with an 11-inch concrete, new-constructed, publicly-dedicated road. Did I answer your question? Okay.
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad I answered the question.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And just to add, the City of Brooklyn, once this is developed, they're going to take ownership and will be responsible for maintaining.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, let's move on to item 0074.
Resolution Number 2011-0074, a resolution authorizing the county executive or his designee to grant a permanent easement and right-of-way to the Cleveland Electric Illuminating Company, doing business as the Illuminating Company, in the amount of $1 to erect, construct, operate, maintain for transmission and distribution of electricity for public and private use, poles, wires, equipment, and appliances on and over county-owned property located at 10991 Memphis Avenue, Brooklyn, in connection with construction of the Memphis Industrial Parkway, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move for adoption of Resolution R2011-0074.
All right, a move by Mr. Germana, seconded by Mr. Miller. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just to, just to repeat, this is an easement so that the Illuminating Company can run wires over the airspace of the parcel.
All right, call the roll.
Approving the resolution. Mr. Greenspan.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Schron.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Now, we'll move down, actually, to item 11, in terms of titles. This is a consideration of resolutions for first reading and referral to committee. We still have number 16.
We can do that one now?
Yes, go ahead and go 16.
On number 16?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This is the item that has been amended for consideration of an ordinance for first reading and referral to committee. Ordinance Number 2011-0016, an ordinance authorizing the creation of a law department under the supervision of the Director of Law, as provided for in Section 5.06 of the Charter of Cuyahoga County, to serve as the legal advisor to and representative of the county executive and county counsel, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
If we can delete the section about it being immediately effective, so this matter will be referred to the Justice Affairs Committee. We had put this on the agenda for passage and suspension of the rule in anticipation of the confirmation of the law director, and since we don't have that, we have a couple weeks then before our new nominee is nominated, council would like to refer this to a committee for consideration. Right, so that's referred to the Justice Affairs Committee, and Ms. Simon will start working on that.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
All right, number 0075.
Resolution Number 2011-0075, a resolution authorizing the county executive or his designee to enter into an agreement of cooperation with City of Cleveland Heights for rehabilitation of Taylor Road from Euclid Heights Boulevard to Cleveland Heights North Corporation line.
All right, this matter will be referred to the Public Works Committee. And Mr. Jones.
Okay.
Number 0076.
Resolution Number 2011-0076, a resolution authorizing the county executive or his designee to enter into an amendment subsidiary Number 1 to contract Number CE 1,003,15, with Perk Company Incorporated for rehabilitation of West 130th Street from Snow Road to Brook Park Road in the cities of Brook Park and Parma for a decrease in the amount of $226,457.98.
All right, once again, this will refer to the Public Works Committee.
Resolution Number 2011-0077, a resolution authorizing the county executive or his designee to enter into an amendment subsidiary Number 1 to contract Number CE 1,003,34, with Burton Scott Contractors LLC for repair and resurfacing of Usher Road from Sprague Road to Bagley Road in the city of Olmsted Falls in Olmsted Township for a decrease in the amount of $20,941.27.
All right, refer to the Public Works Committee.
Resolution Number 2011-0078, a resolution authorizing the county executive or his designee to prepare an amendment to contract Number CE 1,2377, with Gloss, Pyle, Shomer, Burns, and Dehaven Incorporated, doing business as GPD Associates, for consultant engineering services for replacement of Bel Air Road, Bridge Number 24 over Big Creek, and replacement of West 130th Street, Bridge Number 64, over a branch of Big Creek in the city of Cleveland and Village of Lyndale, for additional funds in the amount of $243,541.66.
I refer to Public Works Committee.
Resolution Number 2011-0079, a resolution authorizing the county executive or his designee to enter into an agreement for settlement of property rights in connection with repair of the Stumpf Road Sewer Improvement, located in the city of Parma Heights, County Sewer District Number 1, in an amount equal to the approved appraisal fair market value estimate of $9,150, for parcel numbers 473-21002-S and 473-21029-S, which are permanent sanitary sewer easements. 6330 Pearl Road, Cleveland, Ohio, 44130.
All right, once again to the Public Works Committee. Mr. Jones, we have lots of things to do here.
Resolution Number 2011-0080, a resolution authorizing the county executive to grant sewer builders licenses for the year 2011, authorizing the Director of Public Works or her designee to execute said licenses.
All right, once again to Public Works. I will note that, I've been joking with Mr. Germana, that we've seen that there's an inordinate number of repairs going to Parma, and he's, but we find that they're all equally distributed. However, we have talked with Ms. T. Y., and she's going to show us, probably in the next week or so, a map of how all of the different projects are distributed, because I know that, I know in talking before the election even, I talked to people about how these are, how these projects are selected. So I think all of us would be interested in showing how they're distributed, so that we can tell people in our various districts that it's all open across the board. All right, number 0081.
Resolution Number 2011-0081, a resolution authorizing the county executive or his designee to enter into a revenue-generating agreement with Life Bank for lease of space at the County Coroner's Building, located at 11001 Cedar Avenue, Cleveland, for the period December 1, 2010 through December 31, 2013, for a fee to the county in the amount of $27,600 per annum.
Once again, this will go to Public Works. I did a little research on, this is the organ donation people who have an office right in the coroner's office, so Public Works Committee will take a look at that. All right, number 0082.
Resolution Number 2011-0082, a resolution approving a loan in the amount not to exceed $1 million to Blue Sky Campus Incorporated for a brownfield redevelopment fund project located at 9501 Grainger Road, Garfield Heights, authorizing county executive or his designees to execute all documents required in connection with said loan.
And this matter will be referred to the Economic Development Committee. Number 0083.
Resolution Number 2011-0083, a resolution authorizing the county executive or his designee to enter into a contract with Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County in the amount not to exceed $926,071 for administrative and fiscal agent services to expend funds provided through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009, for qualitative Help Me Grow Part C Early Intervention Services to eligible families, for the period July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011.
Okay, this matter will be referred to Health and Human Services under the able hands of Mr. Brady.
Resolution Number 2011-0084, a resolution authorizing the county executive or his designee to enter into a contract with the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney of Cuyahoga County in the amount not to exceed $2,264,000 for legal services for the period January 1, 2011 through December 31, 2011.
Once again, this will be referred to Health and Human Services, Mr. Brady. All right, thank you. We now have miscellaneous committee reports, and there is, the first item is the Justice Affairs Committee. Ms. Simon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just wanted to report to the council regarding the committee meeting I held last Friday, February 25th, in Justice Affairs, with a specific task to explore the history of the Juvenile Justice Center project and the future opening of the center. And with that committee, brought several questions from councilperson Gallagher and who showed up, and I just want to say thank you to everybody who did show up, because if you recall, Friday was a bad blizzard, and we had actually a full house of people willing to address council, so, and the committee, I appreciate that, but I wanted to start first because a lot of the same individuals who were present at the committee were, are here today to report back to us. With regard to the history questions that were posed, I'm not quite as anxious today to have those answers, because those were going to be provided to us at the next Justice Affairs Committee, so with regard to the history, I don't need the answers today unless somebody's really eager to give those answers to us, but the most pressing issue I see as coming through this committee is when are the doors going to be able to open at the Juvenile Justice Center, when will those doors open, and what is necessary for council to address to enable those doors to open? So, I know the physical space is almost complete, and I guess I would ask our Public Works Director first to talk to us about the actual physical space. Bonnie.
Thank you. I understand that some of you will be taking a tour on Friday, and when you take the tour, you'll see that the building is probably 95, if not 99% complete. There's a few outstanding change orders that still need to be addressed, there, one is the wiring that's associated with the technology that's been before the committee before, the other is the equipment for the parking, the revenue generating parking equipment, and also the equipment for the crosswalk, so the majority of the building is complete, ready for moving in, we just need to address some of the parking lot issues, the crosswalk issues, is where we're at with the building itself.
Thank you. Any questions for our Public Works Director?
Madam President.
Yes.
Do we know at this time if, or is there any readiness to discuss what's going to happen to the juvenile, the old building?
Our intention is for saving of the money, saving of money to maintain that building as the mothball it, so that we can save on utility costs and maintenance and whatnot, so that's our intention at this point right now.
Counselwoman, if I could, Councilwoman Simon, to Mr., to Councilwoman Jones, there's been some discussion about that building and some reuse of it, and some of it's been semi-public, but there is some, there is some developer interest in that, and so, and those conversations are, they were a little bit premature until they knew the move out date and so forth, but there is, there's some interest in the property, so we're hoping that we can, something like that will work out.
It's a large building, it's a, it's a, I would describe it as in an anchor location, and it's something I don't think we would want to just be mothballed.
No, and you should probably, we could have people from the Department of Development sit down with you and talk to, talk to you about some of the proposals that have been there that would kind of take that triangle area and some of the development plans that have been discussed for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other, oh, I'm sorry.
President, you can proceed, that's fine.
So, is anything else, do you want to announce, you said we want to tour, or?
There's more, that I have people here from Juvenile Court, as well as the administration, that I want to just give council a heads up of what to expect in terms of what's going to be on hopefully the agenda next Tuesday for our council meeting, but I also wanted a little bit more specific explanation of what technology, wiring, and infrastructure needs to be in place for the doors to open, so next, if I can have our information person come up, please? People.
To the Chair, we would also like if Juvenile Court could come up as well.
There were two components to what I wanted to at least give council a heads up on, first of all, what is necessary to be in place for the doors to open, and secondly, what's the timeframe between the time that council theoretically is going to approve the appropriation to install the infrastructure with regard to the wiring versus when the time that the doors can open, is it going to be an eight-week span between approval and purchase and placement? Okay?
To the Chair, what I did want to do is give Juvenile Court an opportunity first, just to kind of give a status, update where they are as far as equipment as it exists now, and then ISC from the administration would be available to give a timeframe from the legislation for next Tuesday forward to when the computer components would be available.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Maria Cavalek, and I'm the Court Administrator of the Court of Common Pleased Juvenile Division. Thank you for this opportunity. We're very, very excited about this new home that you have built for us to inhabit, and are anxious to wrap up the final details so that we can move in and continue to do the quality work that we do each and every day. It probably makes the most sense to just make this very, very simple, we have a request, a pending request, that totals $1.7 million to purchase the necessary desktops, laptops, printers, servers, video and audio capture, which basically means our digital recording equipment that we use in our courtrooms instead of hiring dozens of court reporters, we need servers and wiring for our wireless system. It is our information that there is money appropriated in the project construction budget that needs appropriate approval to be released, and then vendors need to be approached to provide and produce the various products that I have just identified, and our technical person from the information services can do a much better job giving you the specific detail on the technical items. Thank you.
John Hunter from the ISC. To answer your question, it's a little bit difficult, because it switches between a timeline on business days and then on man-hours once the equipment gets here, so we're looking at the utilization of our staff going forward within the timeframe, and Juvenile Court's staff, so that we can adequately build a timeline, so we have some rough estimates from man-hour standpoint, but we'll put that to actual days, which will make it a little less confusing, I think.
That's fine, thank you. We're just going to proceed, I mean, the original deadline that was set by others, people other than those sitting basically in, at this council desk or the administration, so that deadline's gone, so what we're going to do is, at least through this committee, and I'm sure through council, is to just move as comprehensively as we can, as assiduously as we can, to make sure that the project as it goes forward is timely as it can be, but also that we perform our due diligence, I think that will be really expected of us, so, anything else, Ms. Cole?
To the Councilwoman, so if you needed specifics on those man-hours, we can get that to you through electronically, so that you have an appropriate timeline for purchase of equipment, as well as the hours that will be required by administrative, as well as court staff in order to get that installation completed.
That would be great, and what I'm going to do is reschedule the Justice Affairs Committee once a lot of this information is at hand, so when we reconvene, we'll have the information, not only that you're speaking of now, but also that was requested at our Justice Affairs Committee, so we have all that ready, so.
It's available.
It is available now?
Well, it will.
It will be.
Yes, we can get that to you in time for whatever the committee meeting date.
And just as a note, thank you, any, Madam President, any questions?
No, does anybody else have questions? Mr. Greenspan?
Madam President, I have one question, what's the timeline and projected, do we not know any, there's no target date at this point?
This committee chair is concerned, I think we just want to get the information now before we go ahead and get a new time deadline, if we're going to get a timeline and see what we can do to project out.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgerald.
If I can just make a couple of general comments, but first specifically as to what Mr. Greenspan said about the timeline, because I think it's helpful to talk about the timeline, about the timeline, you know, when we, when we first got into office, the assumption was we had to quickly approve all of these requests so that the original, the original target date for Juvenile Court to move could be met, and we had a, you know, there was a conflict there, because in order for us to go through the oversight that we thought was appropriate, we didn't see how that could be met, and I think that was the right decision, because, for instance, the $1.7 million you're talking about now for some of the, some of the IT needs was originally $2.5 million, so, as has been discussed before, so that type of oversight, even though it's going to delay moving them over there for a while, I think was, was worth it, and we've been working with them about that, we didn't, we didn't initiate the project, but we have, we have to do what oversight we can at this point of the process. There have been other contracts that we could have signed off on that would have obligated us to move quicker, there are also some other proposals, such as the moving contract, which we basically have deferred, so that we can have more of an open-ended time period or window in order to move, there are also some other proposals of how we could maybe speed it up, in order to hurry up and meet that artificial deadline that was set in terms of what date to move in, so for instance, there was originally a proposal to actually do two migrations, IT migrations, so there was, there was, it was discussed as to whether or not we would move all the old computer equipment in, and our folks at ISC would be stuck with trying to make sure that that transition went well, and then once the purchases and the wiring was done for the new, then we would do another migration, and I didn't think any of that made sense, I thought it made sense to get all of these questions resolved and do the move one time and one time only, in as organized fashion as possible, even if that meant delaying it for a period of time. Now, the other thing that I think it's incumbent upon us to do is to do some retrospective about how we got here and why it has unfolded the way that it has, and I, and councils also express those things, and I think that makes sense, but I also think that we need to figure out, if we can identify flaws, how do we make sure that those flaws are not repeated in future major projects that the county undertakes, and actually, I was talking during the break to Councilman Schron, and he and I were, have actually been working on kind of parallel tracks here, because Jeff, Jeff Applebaum, who is one of our point people on the Medical Mark Project, is one of the nation's foremost experts when it comes to how to manage large public projects in accordance with a design-build philosophy, and we actually had, I didn't know it, but we were trying to get him to be here actually for you today, and Councilman Schron was as well, but that, I think, is going to be the real contribution of what these hearings, what this process is, there's a certain amount of these costs that are just baked into the project, they're already done, and we can, we can document them, and we should, but we're not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to eliminate them, we cannot tear the building down and start all over again, we can't unpurchase furniture that's already sitting there and so on, but what we can figure out is, how did this happen, and are there ordinances we can pass or best practices we can adopt when it comes to managing large public projects to make sure that whatever areas existed in this project, or other large projects that have happened in this stadium projects, other large public projects, make sure it doesn't happen again, so we're committed to getting, unfortunately, Jeff Applebaum was out of town, he isn't able to make that presentation, but you're going to be hearing from him shortly, and I think that's going to result in some legislation that may be informed by this process, but will also be a template that we can use for future public projects. Thank you.
Mr. Schron.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgerald, are there any penalty clauses that are going to get assessed as a result of delaying, or anything we have to be concerned as a council?
Not as far as I know, because that was my first question in terms of, with the moving contract, and it's actually a pretty big contract, and there was some flexibility in there, so I asked the same question, and the information I got was that there would not be.
Are there any penalty that are assessed on the other side, on the vendor's side, or the construction folks, that they're going to miss their targets because of lack of an occupancy date being hit, that we would have to maybe give a waiver on the other side of the equation?
I don't think so, because, you know, the facility is, the facility is done, and there's nobody that's due to be moving into the facility that's going to be vacated, so it was basically just a moving contract at this, at this point, so I don't think so, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you, any other comments? There's individuals here from Juvenile Court, does anybody else want to address council? The judge is here, I thought I saw Judge O'Malley? No? Okay, well, we're going to reconvene probably in the next week or two to address the historical perspective, and this Friday, we're going to have, instead of an actual meeting, we're going to have a tour of the Juvenile Justice Center at 11:30, the new building, so hopefully council can get back to us to let us know if you can make it, and I just wanted to say, as a follow-up, is that Councilman Gallagher hosted, or had a safety committee meeting which addressed the crosswalk, which, do you want to talk about that at this point, of what came out of that meeting?
Thank you, Councilwoman Simon, my understanding is, is through Ms. T. One's office, the City of Cleveland has agreed to pay $20,500 towards the construction of that, the county's cost would be $24,000, and we're waiting for legislation to come through, we found it acceptable, and we greatly appreciate Cleveland's understanding regarding the crosswalk, so that will move forward.
Thank you very much, so council will have, next council meeting, I think at least two pieces of legislation to, to address the going concern of opening up the doors, so thank you very much, everybody, for coming, and thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to give an update.
All right, thank you. Ms. Conwell has a report on the, from her Human Resource Committee.
Madam Chair, to my colleagues, the Human Resource Committee voted for new members of Human Resource Commission to be voted out of committee, as well as the Western Reserve, Area on Aging, and Cuyahoga Regional HIV Health Services Planning Council. The appointment letters were given to committee first, so it was kind of a backwards approach, but in the future process, we've talked about this, will be that all future letters will go to our Clerk of Council, and will be placed on the agenda immediately, and council president will refer to committee. Also, Madam President, to my colleagues, the three appointments for the HRC are Robert Wolf, Angela Simmons, and Kathleen Palmer, and they, all three of them will be invited to come before you on March 8, with a two-minute presentation, but the HR Committee's recommendation is to go ahead and appoint.
Okay, I think also that we will have a, we're in the process of drawing a resolution to provide for the per diem for those, for that commission, and I think Mr. Morales is diligently working on that. Anything else, Ms. Conwell, thank you. All right, any other miscellaneous committee reports? Mr. Greenspan?
Madam President, thank you, just to give council an update, we had a Rules Committee meeting today, and we voted out the ethics ordinance, so it will be coming before council on March 8 for a second reading, I will forward to you in advance of that a copy of the ordinance for your comment. The public records ordinance will, hopefully will be on the agenda as well for March 8, we hope to vote that out earlier on March 8 in our committee meeting. Rules was voted out last week, that'll be on the March 8 agenda, so it's possible that we'll have three items coming out of committee, all three of these items must be passed by March 22, per the original 90-day temporary ordinance that we passed. Also, the Inspector General ordinance was distributed today in our committee meeting for discussion among council, and will be on our agenda on March 8, and I will plan on bringing that forward for first reading on March 8 as well, to begin the process of solidifying the roles and responsibilities of the Inspector General.
All right, thank you, Mr. Greenspan. Mr. Miller?
Madam Chair, and members of the committee, we held a meeting of Finance Committee this past week, and, and we discussed particularly the human service area and the significant impacts that we're expecting to result from the state budget that's currently just starting to be considered, and Councilmember Greenspan and others suggested that while it's good that we're going to do a mid-year update of the budget, we are absolutely certain that there's going to be significant impacts from the state, the size, we don't know yet, and because of that, we are going to try to work with the administration. and because of that, we are going to try to work with the administration to develop a set of, of lower spending targets for, for the various departments that would not be a formal new budget, but would kind of provide guidance, so that what we want to do is to start getting as close to what the spending levels for 2011 are going to need to be as early as possible, because the longer you have to, to make adjustments over, the less severe those adjustments have to be. So we're going to be working within the committee and the, the administration to, to figure out how best exactly to do that.
All right, thank you. Any other miscellaneous committee reports? All right, let's go into miscellaneous business. Yeah. Mr. Brady and Mr. Germana?
Under Ms. Lane.
All right.
Okay. Hate to throw another log on the fire, because I know we've all got so much time on our hands, but at some point, when, when this slows down a little bit, if it ever does, we have a reappraisal of all the property in the county coming up next year. Very big issue, affects every single district of obviously the entire county, finances, not to mention all the, all those residential homes in all of your districts, and I don't need to tell you that a lot of things have happened since we had a major reappraisal six years ago. So at some point, I think that we're going to, we're going to want to have a presentation by the administration about their approach to that, and I don't know what committee that, that ends up in, but it's certainly, it's certainly important enough for the committee as a whole in terms of having some sense, because this is a big deal.
All right, thank you. Mr. Germana?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is concerning Intergovernmental Committee. Now, there was a piece of legislation referred to the committee having to do with opposing the estate tax repeal, and I was trying to get information, is it, is it coming? Okay. Been trying to get, I wanted all council members to, to get the number of the different municipalities and cities that they represent on how much this estate tax means to them. Since I have a relatively small amount, I know what my four cities in my district, how much the estate tax means to them. So hopefully, the email will be forwarded to all members of council, and the Intergovernmental Meeting that we're going to have on March 7th will be to take any testimony that people want to give concerning this, and then hopefully, in anticipation of getting it passed through the committee, hopefully it'll be on the March 8th agenda. Basically, 80 cents of every dollar of estate tax goes to municipalities, and without arguing the merits or the demerits of the estate tax, which a lot of people call death tax, this is not the time, because I don't know of a city that is not struggling, and then we have hanging over the city's heads the, the local government fund. We don't know where that's going to be cut. So, well, you know, whether you're definitely in favor of repealing that estate tax, this is not the time, because it's going to just be more drastic cuts on municipalities, municipalities under tremendous pressure as it is right now. So at the Intergovernmental Operations Committee, we'll be discussing that, and hopefully getting testimony and getting this back to council for the March 8th meeting.
All right, thank you. Anything for, any other miscellaneous business? All right, has anyone signed in for a public comment?
No, Madam President.
Is there anyone who would like to make public comment that has not signed in? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, if anybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I think this is the first day that we've gotten out of council with daylight.